Do we have a motion to accept?
I just want to...
So we have first, then we'll take the second, and we can have a question.
No, never mind, not on that question.
First and a second we have? Yes?
Second.
Second, thank you. None of questions?
No, never mind, not on that question.
Any questions or discussion on this particular item? None being said, all is in favor? Any opposed?
None being noted.
Thank you. Our next items that we have, there may be questions, they're included in your packet for board's information, items one through eighteen.
Now I want to go.
Thank you. You're teed up and ready, let's roll.
No, I just wanted to make mention in our chair's absence that we did have a report from the auxiliary service audit as well as the foundation audit from those two vendors. And we reviewed the management letters and what have you, and that's all within the packet. So I just wanted to say that for the record.
Yes.
Understood.
So noted, very important for the record, thank you. The review of the audits, management letter, etc. It's part of our responsibilities and fiduciary responsibilities support. Any other comments or thoughts or questions as it relates to financial health? Okay, this is going too fast, ladies. Not being said, but won't write a law, I can. Next item is talent management diversity. Chair Schwartz.
Talent management and diversity, I'm turning it over to my leader over there.
In your packet also, there are two resolutions. Take those now? There are two resolutions here. One is for the acceptance of the CSA contract, and the other is for the acceptance of the new pledge. They're right here, they're in hand.
On the hand, okay.
They're here.
One second, let's see. We'll go over this, sorry. Okay, you're expecting action on these?
Yes. Sorry to remind you during this session, but you'll need both have these exceptions of the two contracts.
And Mr. President, we're okay with that?
That's okay.
Thank you, sir. So then let's take a tour of, because the trustees need to become the mayor.
So the very first one is what they asked me. The contract was negotiated, it runs from a term of January, the MOA is a term of January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2021. It was recently ratified, ratified by Cal to December 9th, 2017. And so this resolution is to accept the term and conditions of the ASB contract. And so that's for that one, you know, both separately.
Tracy, just a...
I have access to the contracts if you want.
Just a clarification, it was November 9th, 9th December, right?
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But yes, Tracy, can I ask, can we have copies of the...
I can, yes, I can ask you, I brought one copy with me, but I can certainly, I can give you those copies from the employee...
Can I ask a procedural question? So because this contract doesn't affect now, that's why we're not going by SUNY hearing, when do we, in all of our contracts, use our new monitor?
Well, these are actually... Wow, that's a good question, because the CSA and the ASB contract are common wire contract.
Right, and they're already in place, so I, but going, what's the go forward on including that in all of our SUNY contracts?
So, so we got a letter from SUNY, from Donna Bullock, who's the council for community colleges, saying that they are currently undergoing a policy development regarding the shortening of names, and that we will get notification fairly shortly, once that policy is determined now. Many SUNY community colleges have already shortened their names, and so we don't see any, any reason they would stop us, but they will create a formal policy as institutions now are coming forward and formally requesting a shortened name.
I am also aware that we may have a minor adjustment in the number item 12, calendar management agenda.
Good morning, everyone. The only change for the amended agenda is the addition of two individuals during the distance learning program. Right now, they're currently under purpose grants, and we, at the end of, beginning of February, they'll be coming off of the purpose grant. So we reclassify an associate professor in a part-time mentor position to cover the salaries of those two individuals. So that's the only change on the agenda.
So it's a reclassification of two employees that were not reflected on your packet that was sent out earlier, so we're all clear on that. It's the, do the trustees feel comfortable living forward on a consent basis, or would it be a motion to remove item number 12, the voted for individual?
Consent is fine with me.
Okay, motion to move forward. So do we have a motion to accept a consent agenda, items number one through 12? Motion trustee over. Second trustee Lenihan, thank you. Discussion on the matter. That was a brief discussion. All those in favor? Any opposed?
We're out of room.
Beautiful, thank you very much. We can move right into committee briefings, number three today. And as you know, it's always top of our list, student success. So curriculum on student success will start with trustee Swartz and over.
And as usual, we will turn it over to our leader.
Okay, two items for the approval are the contract, pre, the CAPS contract we had for several years, that's $500,000, we're asking for approval for this year. Moving that forward. And the second item that we're asking for renewal on is the Blackboard learning system, about $90,000 a year, and this is through, for three more years of those two vote items for motion.
Just a question. Number one, is, is that program CAPS, is that cap $500?
Cap $500.
Yep.
Do we have a motion to accept items one or two from curriculum on student success? First and second, thank you. Discussion on the matter? None being said, all those in favor? Thank you. Just an editorial comment, I'd like to point out that if we're looking through this, in this particular case, the SUNY system Blackboard, talking about the online hybrid teaching, just so that we're aware, according to the information you received, which I'm sure you looked at, we have nearly 50,000 hours logged in there. It's quite impressive, that's about 15% of our total database. So when we talk about where we're going, it started to show pretty clear directions of what demand is and what our offerings are between straight, online and hybrid programs delivered. So that was quite interesting to be, I thought, decided, which was very before publicly. Next item for board's information, any other items that we'd like to go to?
I'd like to point out about the Northland Training Center Extension Center that was mentioned in the minutes from the December 5th curriculum on students' success agenda. I was just on a site visit there, and I think they're going to be up and ready by September, and our teachers will be, our faculty will be helping train these folks, and I would suggest that we, in October, November, have a board meeting there to see all that's going on.
So noted, thank you. We will move along to financial health, as long as there is no other particular questions as it relates to student success. Our chair today, trustee Callan, is not with us, so this is like a baptism under.
So the line for approval is a LinkedIn subscription for Lider.com, which is basically a training tool for the institution, for Excel, things like that. They've been highly hit for the last, if you hear, or a year and a half with limited number of licenses, and what we have seen is we've seen the trend of growing use of this particular product. So that's 499 licenses, which is right now about, for the cost of this product, it's about $30 a head. So we're looking to expand it and be able to then start leveraging and using it for the entire institution, which is students and faculty and staff, roughly about 12,000 heads. And that drops the price, we add up $3,000, $3,500 to the annual cost, which drops the price to about $1.50 a head. And we think this is going to be a good way for us to continue to grow, move forward, and get the training to our faculty, staff, and students at a very reasonable cost.
So noted. Do we have a motion to accept?
I just want to.
So we have first, then we'll take the second, and we can have a question.
Sorry, go, no, no, go ahead.
First and the second we have, yes?
Second.
Second, thank you. Other questions?
No, never mind, not on that question.
Any questions or discussion on this particular item? None being said, all those in favor? Any opposed? None being noted, thank you. Our next items that we have, and there may be questions, they're included in your packet for board's information, items one through 18.
Now I want to go.
Thank you. You're teed up and ready, that's cool.
No, I just wanted to make mention in our chair's absence, that we did have a report from the auxiliary service audit, as well as the foundational audit from those two vendors. And we reviewed the management letters and what have you, and that's all within the packet. So I just wanted to say that for the record.
Yes.
And so.
So noted, very important for the record, thank you. A review of the audits, management letter, et cetera. It's part of our responsibilities and fiduciary responsibilities to work. Any other comments or thoughts or questions as it relates to financial health? Okay, this is going too fast, ladies. Not being said, but won't write a law, I can. Next item is talent management diversity. Chair Schwartz.
Talent management and diversity, I'm turning it over to my leader over there.
In your packet also, there are two resolutions, take those now. There are two resolutions here. One is for the acceptance of the CSA contract, and whether or not we accept these properly in the package. They're right here, they're in hand.
On the hand, okay. Handout.
Second, let's see, we'll go over this, sorry. Okay, you, you're expecting action on these?
Yes. Sorry to remind you during this session, but you'll need, both have these exceptions of the two contracts.
And Mr. President, we're okay with that?
That's okay.
Thank you, sir. So then let's, let's take a tour, because the trustees need to become the mayor.
So the very first one is what they asked me. The contract was negotiated, it runs from a term of January, the MOA is a term of January 1st, 2017, through December 31st, 2021. It was recently ratified, ratified by the county December 9th, 2017. And so this, this resolution is to accept the term and conditions of the ASB contract. And so that's for that, you know, both separately.
Just a classification, it was November 9th, 9th December, right?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you. But yes, Tracy, can I ask, can we have copies of the?
I can, yes, I can ask you, I brought one copy with me, but I can certainly, I can give you those copies from the employee.
Can I ask a procedural question? So because this contract doesn't affect now, that's why we're not going by SUNY Erie, when do we, in all of our contracts, use our new monitor?
Well, these are actually. Wow, that's a good question, because the, the CSA and the ASB contract are common wire contracts.
Right, and they're already in place, so I, but going, what's the go forward on including that in all of our SUNY contracts?
So, so we, we got a letter from SUNY, from Donna Bullock, who's the council for community colleges, saying that they are currently undergoing a policy development regarding the shortening of names, and that we will get notification fairly shortly, once that policy is determined now. Many SUNY community colleges have already shortened their names, and so we, we don't see any, any reason they, they would stop us, but they will create a formal policy as institutions now are coming forward and formally requesting a shortened name.
So I appreciate you bringing this up, and this has something to do with the asset of the resolution, however, it's an important point, I'd like to bring this back up around after we go through the piece, if you wouldn't mind, but I'd like to discuss that. So any particular questions on the resolution as it relates to ASB?
Just a question on the terms, you know, the terms of the ASB contract? What are the terms, percentage of increases and?
Uh, I think it was 2%, increase in salary.
In the first year?
Yes, and I had to look through the contract to do the rest of the year's forty, so, but those 2% is supposed to be the kind of time. Like I said, I could send copy, send copy, an email, or I don't want to, I don't want a copy of the contract.
When does this have to be approved?
Uh, the contract was already added, so we're starting to make changes now.
Can we get a virtual adjustment?
It is, for sure.
How does the trustee, what's the sense here at this point? Are you comfortable with understanding the resolution and acting on the resolution, or do you feel you need more time?
I, I, just a question, I mean, I, I'm sort of inclined to, to vote in favor, it's vetted pretty thoroughly, but I, I think, just asking the question of how the, the overall economic settlement fit into the, the budget that we passed, and whether there are expenses that, that are incurred in either of these agreements that were not anticipated, and that it could affect the overall budget of the ECC. So I guess that's a question.
Well, I know that I did, Penny and Chris started looking at the contract, then doing some additional cost out on what it will cost us, it is going to cost us additional money, because there are raises in the contract. Hopefully it will be offset in the fact that CSA, for instance, will begin paying, people are paying 0%, but not paying me, we're set towards our healthcare, we'll start paying a percentage towards our healthcare, so there's some things to offset that we need increases. But, again, Penny, it was just, just a rise, you're going to be taking a look at it, going to cost out, and that's typically done by bill, bills, and compares, so Penny will take a look around, and what can increase there. So if you're comfort, if you're not comfortable, you can always wait until next month, and get better handle on what the cost out is, and I agree that next month, but the contract is in effect, both in effect, so whether you vote today or not, the contract exists, it's been ratified by the county, and we've got a legislature, well, and that's, we're following the contract.
Is the offset in both contracts, asking me CSVA for healthcare?
Well, we could approve it, because we can't change it. We certainly would, we would appreciate having that, the cost piece sent to us.
Okay, please do that.
That would be very helpful.
Do some cost out, bring those forward.
Yes, please.
And we can check outstanding practices, we do this.
That would make sense.
Well, we'll be going this one till 2020.
Yeah, before, before that happens.
So.
Why wasn't this including the board packet?
Because actually, we just realized we needed to bring this forward, so, so it just went forward with the county a couple of weeks ago, and I got a copy of the county resolution yesterday, so we put this in there, so. So typically, I don't like to bring things to the committee too far at this point, so.
Typically, we don't like them.
I think, and I said to Penny earlier, I'm going to be like.
There are three key elements, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, so you can make your decision how you'd like to proceed. They both follow each other, so I'll speak to them both. One is that we're hereby approving the terms and conditions set forth of the quote-unquote tentative agreement, both, both of the contracts. Two, the terms and conditions of the success agreement, which will be implemented by us in full. And three, that any budgetary adjustments necessary for the fiscal year are hereby authorized upon the increased cost. So that's what you would be acting upon.
Well, personally, I, I just think that it's, it puts us in a very difficult position to be voting to approve contracts, sort of sight unseen, and not knowing what the full implications are. Not that I, you know, doubt that it was negotiated in good faith, and it's, it's an agreement that works for all parties, but we really need to have the, the details, even just the summary sheet and its financial implications, before I'd be comfortable voting up for it.
Trustee Lenihan?
I mean, my feeling is we probably should put it off until, but how are our employees affected right now? I mean, like.
It's implemented.
So they're getting the rates now?
Well, we haven't implemented the rates yet, because we're just.
They're, they're ready for lactate?
Yeah, it's, it's not been registered yet, yes, probably the beginning of February will be the rates.
So it'd be a time question versus if.
Right, I think at this point, it's just large information is what we're trying to, to get here, because it's going to go into effect in February, right? But it doesn't need our approval to go into effect, it's going into effect.
It's, we're under the county contract.
So I agree with that, because as much information as we tend to, we can, at least, know how this lines up with our budgets.
Any other thoughts from Callan before?
Just that that information needs to be included in the board packet when these issues come forward in the future, is a requirement.
Thank you, so that we will not, unless so, would like to bring motion.
Move the table.
Move the table, we have a first and then a second, thank you. Any comments or questions? None? All in favor, tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? None being said, we'll move tables for next meeting, thank you. We'll move along to strategic planning and assessment, which is, this is back yesterday, it's reported out. For the board's information, we have minutes from the progress, which are included in your packet. Yesterday's meeting, I think we had quick briefing, it's a discussion, following through on a couple of items. First of which I would like to distribute to you as related to committees. As you know, that we made a commitment after the first year of the CAF plan, to make certain that we are following through, and that the items, the 22 items were implemented, were being reviewed and confirming that they are in place, as we intended them to be. So the committee was led by Joan Castile, in this case, broke out each of the items as they apply to each of our board committees. So that's for your information, okay? So a committee, if you would be so kind, to be prepared next month.
Yes.
Yes. Prepare next month, report back, hopefully with affirmative statement that all these items, in fact, are implied and being followed as intended. Thank you. The next item was that the discussion in preparation for next month. As we continue to advance ourselves as an institution, dependency and information that we make decisions upon, as management makes decisions upon, even multiple times in a day, is based on depth, and should be based on depth. I'm happy to report that the Tableau program that's being developed out will be ready for your review within the next two weeks. A link will be sent to you individually to become acquainted with the Tableau data information system, and it looks like a dashboard, so it's things that you've all seen, they come in circles and cubes, and, but most important, it's the information behind them, contained in them. But one of the, the key features that I want to make sure that we all look at is, and discussed yesterday, was the importance of being transparent with this information. And let me explain what that means from my perspective. In the private world, if management is constantly just taking its information in the room and calling out decisions out the door to the stable of employees, or my coworkers in my case, it's really hard for employees to understand why we're doing what we're doing, or, not necessarily always agree with it, but just to have an understanding of it. We felt it was very important that we're going to be developing out this Tableau program, not only to be shared amongst the leadership, but key pieces of this information will be shown in data, so everyone can understand why we're doing what we're doing. I'm not asking for everybody's agreement on it, but at least you'll be informed, and be informed with the data, the same data, because I know historically, at least in my meetings, as a committee member, I have sat meetings where amongst ourselves and amongst management, everyone is picking up a piece of paper saying different things, because the information was different in each piece of paper. And we're going to stop that, we're making a movement here with this Tableau program, data upgrades, and data integrity, to help ourselves have common information for all. So I'm very excited about it, I'd like to thank the president for bringing, introducing Tableau to us, and I know it's out of your, our, actually our back world, Seattle, but they're an incredible organization, and I think we'll benefit from it. Do you have any comments, Dan, that you'd like to bring forward? So stay tuned, it'll come out, and then during our official board meeting, for everybody to share, there will be a presentation, but I wanted to make sure you got briefed a couple weeks prior, so you can ask questions while the presentation's being made in next meeting. It's unreasonable. As a report? Yes, Fabio is, is, is driving that process through, through the committee, thank you for bringing that forward. Thanks, Chair. That's the end of the report, strategic planning and assessment, marketing institutional advancement. Chair, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have some interesting developments in marketing regarding RFPs that are up and running, so perhaps Volokh can give us a full understanding of that.
So we have two RFPs that I just wanted to give you a brief update on. The first one is the RFP search engine and marketing. That one is actually out already, it is due back tomorrow, so the committee for that will be meeting next week to do an assessment on those, to be able to award that, so we do expect to bring that to the board for approval, probably at the February meeting, in all likelihood. What they are going to allow us to do is actually raise us up in the search engine rankings, so if somebody is searching for a college, and they do a premier college, or SUNY premier, or SUNY college, we're going to raise up high when they do that search. What we're going to do in correspondence to that as well, is develop a campaign surrounding digital display advertising, so we'll have a monthly campaign going for different pockets of our programs, that will correspond to what we're doing in search terms for that particular month. So the search engine marketing piece, that, that search piece will be done by an outside organization, simply because that is something that we don't have the capability of doing in-house, and that's something that is monitored on an hourly basis, where they look to see how high we are ranked. The display piece of it, we will be pulling inside the house, and we will be doing that ourselves, so we'll be developing that several hours, and we're developing all the graphics ourselves, and we'll be doing all the line for that ourselves as well. So that one should be coming to you next month, and we'll give you a full overview on who we've chosen for the RFP and why. The second one, I just wanted to give you a brief update on where we are with the website. So we are releasing an RFP probably within the next week or so on the website, and that is a web RFP that's going to encompass both the content management system, which is where it's housed, as well as the design portion. So the content management provider is actually going to be required to bring a design partner to the table with them. And the reason we're doing it that way is because when the website was developed in the past, there was a disconnect between the design portion of it and the way the content management system was set up. So the content management system provider will be held accountable for their design partners, to ensure that our needs are met on both ends of it. That RFP will end up probably coming to this board for approval in, I mean, expecting April at this point, we're, we're assuming to bring it to the Marketing Institutional Advancement Committee in March, to be able to review it there, and we'll be bringing it before this board in April. That one will also, will require legislative approval, because we will be signing a contract for multiple years for the content management system portion of it, and that will raise it above the threshold for county approval. And one really quick piece as well, Kate mentioned the Northland Training Center, we are actually at the table with the Northland people, and we are, we are developing co-branded pieces with them, so we're working with them to ensure that our new brand is updated, they're already using our new logo, but we're, and we're making sure that our brand is relevant with what they're doing there as well.
And during the remarks at this event I was at this week, the chair there, Sue Tucker, used SUNY Erie as my.
Absolutely. So anybody have any questions?
Chair, I do have a question, kind of goes back to your question, because I think this would be a appropriate spot to discuss this about SUNY Erie, the use of SUNY Erie and its names, and its defining, because Q to B, you brought our attention to this, which is, I think is helpful, thank you. What came to my mind is understanding as a marketing entity, doing business as, and it's legal entity, they, are we intending that to be one of the same going forward basis?
I'm not sure what a legal entity is relative to the business entity.
Dan, you want to be through with?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the College's charter is, is Erie Community College, it's always going to be Erie Community College, so from a legal standpoint, we will be known as SUNY Erie Community College, so our admissions application, for instance, that's how we're going to do it. What SUNY approves is the shortened version, basically your nickname, and how you use your name as far as marketing and branding goes. So the SUNY Erie piece will be approved by SUNY to, in our, on all of our marketing materials, but from a legal charter standpoint, if there's, if it's in a contract, in all likelihood, it will always appear as SUNY Erie Community College. Right, and so the piece that we're going to add to the, to the legal charter, or, for instance, with local county, would be the SUNY piece of that. So there, that's, that's the significant difference between what SUNY approves and what the College's charter is, and legal charter.
So on these resolutions going forward, we need to?
They'll add the word SUNY, and yes.
Which is legal matters are.
Correct, that is actually our legal charter name, so that can be incorporated into anything. Correct.
Thank you.
This is not uncommon, this is a very common process of start entities and use our marketing as a PPA.
Of course.
Any other questions or comments on that issue? Thank you, Chair. Report, the Chair. General updates. The first item that I'd like to go to is, between now and next meeting, we will be spending, we as trustees and committees, will be spending time on the assessment of our committees of the board. And the intent is to look for alignment in a future-looking basis as to our strategic plan, how that's aligned, and the purpose of our committees, as you know, we wrote out descriptions each year of the purpose of our committees, we're reviewing those, the need, is there a new need for different types of committees, and most importantly, shall we sunset a committee or two because of their relevance going forward? So that's the content, so over this next 30 days, we'll be having dialogue back and forth, and your specific participations, and who will participate at committee levels. And I just bring that forward as an FYI, so when you see the phone ringing, and I'm on the other end of it, it's probably about that issue. So I appreciate your times, and thank you for all of you who have already responded and called me back, and that makes the subject better. But we will also have a couple of meetings in between. Any thoughts or comments, if you'd like to talk about that, committees?
I just want to say that I love the committee level work, and I think we get a lot hashed out on the committee level work, and I think that's really helping us to be more informed for these meetings, so.
Thank you for saying that.
Thank you.
That's, that's the exact intent, that the work of the board, or excuse me, of the committee brings forward more thorough information, so the board at large can benefit from the knowledge that they've spent in committee.
Absolutely.
So that's working.
Good job, Chair.
Everyone wants a committee, it's super. Our end hack committee, speaking of which, will take the lead. Policies, do we have a report for this month?
The policy committee has not met this month, but we look, we are meeting February 9th, it's, you have this calendar there, and I should say too, that the Marketing Advancement Committee is meeting on February 9th, so you're all invited to both of those. And we look forward to diving in to making sure we are implementing the CAF recommendations, and to looking at other policies that are relevant and coming through, so we'll have more to report next month.
Thank you. I don't believe we have, thank you very much, I don't believe we have a technology report this month, unless, someone's going to correct me otherwise. Item three, the OSE, we provided that report out in strategic planning assessment, so that was already on the table, and you saw that. So let us relieve the, the end of the report for the chair. Any questions or comments, but we move on to the report of the president. None being said, factor in play.
Great.
Good morning.
Good morning. In terms of academic affairs, the STEM building is now open, and classes are running out of it. It's a soft opening, but we are still looking for a sponsor to name the building. As a reminder by all. As a reminder, biology, chemistry, physics and engineering science have moved their departments into the STEM building. There are also two new tutoring labs in the STEM building. I was interviewed by Buffalo News reporter Jay Tokaz yesterday and he's planning to provide a story on the new building sometime this week. Our law enforcement training academy began its spring 18 training this week with a swearing in of 62 recruits. A new certificate program in early childhood studies have, has been approved by New York State Ed and SUNY for a fall 18 start. The Northland Workforce Training Center expects to be open on Buffalo's east side in the fall of 18 with 300 SUNY Erie and Alfred State students. I met with Skip Sullivan, the president of Alfred State, and we both believe this will be good for our schools as well as Western New York. Pathways to success generated 100, sorry, 1,800 FTEs through all of their programs in 2016, 2017, which generated more than 4.8 million in revenue for the college. In terms of student life and enrollment management, I'm happy to say that our spring 2018 head count is up 1%. Advanced studies enrollments for the spring term are showing over 100% growth from spring of 17. In my visit of other SUNY community colleges across the state, I discovered that advanced studies revenue sometimes comprises as much as one-third of the operating budget. So in the fall, I instructed Deb Schmidt, the director, to move aggressively in this direction and her hard work in this area has already had an impact. Applications are up 7% from last year and up 33% from the fall of 2016, which is a very positive sign as my colleagues at the other SUNY community colleges are generally reporting that decline. Women soccer player Samantha Carey earned first team all-conference and first team all-region honors as she was recently honored at the United Soccer Coaches Convention in Philadelphia as a first team All-American. There's a new initiative to create efficiencies and improve retention by consolidating most of our opportunity programs, including Say Yes and Men of Merit into a central space at City Campus. We have also created a Student Affairs Satellite Office at North and are working to create one at South Campus as well so that students can meet staff at a campus of their convenience. In terms of the foundation, we've welcomed three new board members. Althea Thurston, who is a SUNY Erie alum and Director of Leadership Buffalo, Scott Stenclick, President of Superior Technical Resources, Inc., and Thomas Albright, Executive Director of the Yuki School Management Center for Entrepreneurial Leadership. And I've also nominated our very own Lynn Lennahan for consideration with a view to have greater communication and stronger relationship between foundation and college boards. I'm also happy to report we ended 2017 on a high note with over $100,000 in grants and pledges in December. As regards to human resources, to enhance the onboarding of our adjunct instructors, Human Resources has collaborated with the academic deans as well as the Center for Professional Development to develop a half-day orientation. And this is the first of its kind, the first session for adjuncts is taking place at South Campus this Saturday. And we think that this training will help our adjunct faculty learn college processes and software tools as well as best practices to bear serve our students.
I wanted to also, I found out today from Mike that we have 37 people registered for the training.
Oh, wow.
So we say it's a.
Can you stand up and make sure that?
I was saying, we have 37 adjuncts registered for the training and this is coming Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 at South Campus.
Make me smile.
I'm excited about it.
As was mentioned, ASME and CSCE have completed contract negotiations and the elected bargaining agreements are going into effect. In terms of information technology, staff in many areas are working to complete training, architecture, design and strategies for operational and functional change management as we move forward with the Workday ERP system. It's anticipated that Human Resources will go live in July of 18 and Finance to go live in September of 18.
Dan, as far as IT, do we have a number of users on Starfish now, updated percentage?
We are working on that data this week. That's what we're going to have to worry about.
Thank you.
From Finance and Administration, very timely. The annual finance audit for FY17 is nearly completed. What we can tell thus far is approximately $3 million will be put back into fund balance instead of having to use reserves to cover operating costs that we have budgeted for. The goal for the 19 budget is to hold tuition and fees constant and not leverage any reserve funds to balance the operating budget. Long-term budgeting for fiscal '20 and beyond will begin in September 18 of '18, accomplishing this and then building a functional FY19 budget without dipping into reserves for operations to show middle states that we are fiscally sustainable and stable. In terms of facilities and security, the student lounge at City received a significant facelift over the windbreak that you might take a look at as you walk out the door. Fresh coat of paint seems to make that big difference and using the school colors, this was recommended by one of the students in the lounge when we were surveying the space. Also at City Campus, the Security Supervisor Office will move into the old Foundation Office, putting them in direct proximity of the City Security Office. And this will allow marketing to expand its footprint into the vacated security office space. And from marketing communications, we've launched the college's new logos. I think there's a pin in front of most of you. And we've begun the process of redesigning all of the on this promotional material. That's it from the President. Any questions, Scott?
Can you just give a little more detail about the advanced studies program, what it details?
Sure. So advanced studies provides concurrent education for high school students in Western New York. So they would get high school credit and college credit simultaneously. They are taught by high school instructors to meet our requirements. So they typically are at master's level. And so we provide this in math and business and various other courses. It provides students a leg up both in terms of having some credit, college credits entering college. It also gives them a little confidence in being able to handle college courses. So it also helps integrate the curriculum between high school and college.
So they come here?
No.
No.
It's.
Any other questions or comments?
I do have a question.
Trustee Wilson.
Can you speak a little bit about the faculty evaluation process and procedure? I know we are working on creating or talking about student evaluation for their faculty.
Right.
Has that made any progress yet?
Yeah, well, under the contract with the Faculty Federation, there are only specific occasions where faculty are evaluated and for instance, when they're going out for tenure. I think it's important to get student feedback as much as possible, so we're doing student surveys prior to the end of the course so that we can see how the student is experiencing the class and the faculty can get feedback as to what's working and what isn't. So we're planning to do that, especially with our distance learning courses because we're moving aggressively in that direction and we want to make sure the quality of that product because I think that that's going to be an area of growth for us.
Okay. My other question is regarding the Blackboard. The Chair mentioned that we have increased a lot of hours on Blackboard, which is great. I had the privilege of assisting my niece, who's attending classes here now, on her Blackboard class yesterday. I'm just wondering if there, what's the procedure for support, internet support for those students? Because for her, her situation specifically was although she was on Blackboard, she was being led to another course or another platform, learning platform. And her Blackboard was working well, but this other platform did not work well. So it was stopping her from doing part of her, her training. So I just want to make sure that our students have a place to come to or go to to get troubleshoot IT support and what happened if we're moving to a more online-based curriculum. I'm sorry.
We do have student support for the use of Blackboard. I'm not sure about the platform you're talking about though.
It was, I can tell you, I don't know the name of it, but it was one Khan Academy and another was Vet, P H E T or something like that.
The Khan Academy, from my understanding, provides basically YouTube videos for people to.
This one was a simulation. She had to do a simulated, simulating exercise. I don't have, we don't have to go into specifics here, but I just know we could not get to do that simulating exercise.
So, Trustee Wilson, I'm trying to understand if your question, we'd like to know more about the support process.
Right, exactly.
Okay. So Paulie Quinn would be happy to answer this.
So I know the answer for the student support. I am a distance learning instructor as well. I'm on the Distance Learning Collegewide Committee and I do a lot of work with the Blackboard training. So the computer help desk actually just extended their hours. It's a brand new thing. They're open 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and they have hours on the weekend as well. So students can call the computer help desk at 716-851-1835, but they can also put in a ticket once they're logged into the ECC homepage and they can go link right to the computer help desk and state what their problem is and someone working at the computer help desk will return your call.
Perfect.
They troubleshoot anything on exterior. A lot of times it's just like a browser issue. Sometimes it's other things, but they're really good at walking students through how to download things for different courses, how to get through different avenues if they're linked out. So the computer help desk is wonderful to students and they have brand new hours, which has been very helpful.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
In addition to that, I just wanted to share too that we have online mentors that students on Blackboard can use. So in the top like bar, like there's tabs, they can go to student help and there's a chart that shows there's someone from 7:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night, Monday through Wednesday, and then 7:00 to 6:00 on Thursdays, 7:00 to 4:00 on Fridays.
Perfect.
So they have their email, their phone number, their name all right there that they can contact someone.
Okay.
So Dan, did your niece know about all those services or?
No. But I mean, maybe she didn't look at the right place either. I don't, I don't know.
Any other questions or thoughts, observations from the President or the Court? Very robust report, thank you so much, sir. And very formidable to me. We'll move on to the student trustee report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Murphy. So we're still struggling with some high turnover here in student government for some reason. So we went from full staff to no staff here at City. However, applications have been released on Monday, so we're looking and we're, I'm using people that I know throughout the campuses to reach out to friends that they think would be good, a good fit for us. However, we do now have full staff at South Campus and we still have our full staff at North, I'm sorry. So we just get to pick up City and we'll be all ready to start the semester strong. Our first meeting will be this coming Monday, January 29th. It'll be an in-person meeting from 4:00 to 6:00. It'll be in G100. They're always open for anyone who wants to attend. Our big project for this semester will be using our facilities improvement budget. Things like putting baby changing tables in every single bathroom, not just the female bathrooms. Putting things like getting, working with maintenance to get coat hooks or shelling or something inside the stalls so you're not putting your bags in the ground. Putting international flags around the campus just to reflect places that our students may identify with, just to show how the tolerance and the cultural diversity of our schools. And of course, taking a step from City and updating all the furniture in student lounge areas at North and South. So those will be the big projects for this coming semester. Now everything's kind of falling into place, so I'll be proud to report when all that goes through. And that's pretty much it. As always, I'm here if there's ever a student concern or question, comment, they can always be referred to me.
Any questions or comments, observations?
Good job. Really nice.
Thank you. The College Senate report is up and we are anxious to hear.
So as we know, within the last week or so, our government's executive budget was released and it was particularly hard on community colleges. In nutshell, there's no executive support for the community college funding model redesign. There's flat base aid, so there's no FTE increase. There's a loss of $1.1 million for childcare. There's a loss of $1.5 million for gap funding. And university-wide programs increases group last year, federal legislature were removed for EOP and EOC. So the Faculty Council of Community Colleges has put forth a resolution supporting a new funding model for community colleges. As we know, there are 30 community colleges across the state and with our rigorous programs, we are responsible for 50% of the transfers to statewide and SUNY schools. So with the current FTE model, it's negatively impacting the ability of community colleges to create realistic predictive models that are fiscally responsible and sensitive to students. The model often resulted in increased financial burdens to our students and due to the colleges' need to annually raise tuition to make up shortfalls and state funding, which we all know about personally. So there was a new model proposed and it was approved by the SUNY Board of Trustees in the 2018-19 operating budget. And it was also unanimously approved by the New York State Community Colleges Association Presidents and it's supported by the Future College Business Officers Association. Faculty Council of Community Colleges fully supports this measure and this resolution and the new budget. So they are asking all of the community colleges to look at this resolution and discuss it at our upcoming meetings. So we will be discussing it at our February meeting for a lively discussion on the budget and we're hoping to endorse this resolution in our February 13th meeting.
What time is?
It's going to be at 2:30 and we're going to be at North Campus in B207. Yeah, B207.
Aside from that, is there any effort to the meeting with our state delegation on the need to?
Then something that they are asking, we're hoping that the legislature replaces some of it and they're asking that a lot of the people within the Faculty Council of Community Colleges are having meetings with state delegates for different regions and they're asking that anyone that can speak to our state lawmakers will also talk to them about trying to reestablish some of the budget for community colleges.
If I could just add too, we're obviously members of various organizations around town who have a partnership in the Amish Chamber and we worked hard to get this request on their advocacy agenda. So we both have partnership and the Amish Chamber has this included. And I was in Albany a couple of weeks ago for the Advancement Officers Meeting and we're going to work with, they're actually asking us not to come to Albany this year to do a lot, you know, to do advocacy. It can be so crazy. So we're setting up meetings locally with our delegation. We're on the agenda for the state delegation, but we'll also be utilizing student government folks to schedule meetings in collaboration with student affairs, obviously with our President and we'll be advocating as well. And we talked about this, as I think you know, I'm on the executive council for the College Senate. We talked about this being on the agenda, how do we work with the College Senate, how do we work with faculty and their advocacy efforts as well? We've been talking to Mike and Andy. I know we always try to sync up, but so we're all in this together, I guess.
Do you want the, uh, the NICE lobbying dates? Okay, they're going to be 27th and 28th February. I'm sorry, the NICE lobbying dates. The United Teachers Lobbying Dates will be the 27th and 28th of February. And we'll be NICE to have a joint delegation. We will be taking students.
Has anybody broken down the, so the governor's budget's out. He's cussing, speak of, uh, so what is the overall impact, uh, of the budget if it's passed as is to ECC?
I don't know if we've drilled down yet to ECC, but it's an eighteen million dollar cut in the sector for community colleges just by, by the FTE decrease statewide, based on the formula. And then if you add into some of the other things like childcare that we talked about, that's an additional hit.
So its status quo on the FTE, I mean, so if our enrollment is the, is the same, but then there are cuts in childcare support and, uh, the gap funding. Do you see the gap funding a little bit?
Uh, the gap funding.
Yeah, I'm not positive on that. We can get back to that, don't have any feeling. Uh, you know, one of the, one of the things that, um, you know, I think if you spend any time in Albany, they say it takes three years to get anything through and we're asking for a major change in the way community colleges are funded. This would be year two of the request. Our argument is that we can't wait till year three, right? And it's not just us. I think, uh, Dan pointed out, our, you know, fingers crossed and the hard work that's being done, our enrollment looks better than most of the other community colleges, but it's, it's going to hit our sector sort of, um, proportionately more than the other ones as well. So it's really important that we work together. And, and the other thing I'd say is I think that our voices as sort of inside government get lost, which is why we have to leverage, you know, the people on this board, our business supporters and outside entities to say how much this is important. And Dan, I hope you don't mind if I, you know, mention, you know, we've engaged ESDC, we've engaged the Nerf and training people and the, and the managers, and the manufacturers to say, you're trying to promote community colleges and, and this sector in terms of reports for providing a workforce yet, cutting our funding. So if you just pull this harmless, we're not asking for anything more, just keep us where we are. It gives us some time to, to build off of what we've already been doing ourselves and hopefully other community colleges do so.
Is there a, a general backup plan in case, I mean, the systemic change in the funding is, is not, uh, possible that we're asking for more money per FTE?
Uh, President McCoy was part of a conversation over the week, last week, I think, and there's, there is a Plan B. I don't know if their details have emerged on that yet, but I think it's, if we don't get this, you know, there's sort of a Plan B to advocate for, but I don't think the, uh, details are, are ready yet. We want to stay where we are in terms of, you know, looking for the formulation.
Yes, sir. Not to duplicate lobbying efforts because it sounds oppressive, um, but I think at the retreat we talked about maybe having a practice, maybe we talked about this at the next meeting this morning, um, maybe having the board trustees sponsor a practice where we can bring together all the forces that come with the impact of what we're doing. And maybe, you know, sometimes, I mean, the, please don't let it come together till the end of the session. We talked about impacting the budget, um, actually for, so we're talking about it right now.
Yeah, I mean, there's always a chance after that, as you know, but the chances of them doing something while the state's facing some deficit situation are probably minimal. So we have to do it during the budget process.
I'm just saying, maybe we should sponsor a practice.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's so many people where everybody comes together and, um, agree with the sentences.
Let's take a sideline after this.
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
Okay, back to the Senate report.
So we're hoping for the same lively, uh, conversation and to increase lobbying efforts from our faculty and staff, uh, and students to get as much passion for the state budget as we do so that we can get more interest for the next lobbying days and then, you know, lots of advocacy for, uh, the budget. Uh, in addition to the budget, uh, I will be attending the Erie County Legislature meeting on some firsts with Pat Ryan, who's our Director of, uh, Distance Learning in support of the extension of the Blackboard contract, uh, as a member of the committee. And then, um, I'm also a member of the Erie County SUNY Erie Task Force and we have concluded that. Todd and I were at the last, uh, meeting. We have a draft report that has been done. I believe everybody should have gotten a copy and, uh, that's going to go into a final report form and then we're working on, what we're going to work on for the next, uh, calendar year. And that's it. So just, uh, February 13th, 2:30 PM is our next College Senate meeting. We will also be streaming it if, uh, it's, uh, the time that you're allowing to make it, but we always love company. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Uh, our next item is the affiliated energy report. President McCoy did a report on the foundation, so that would be the report today. It's, uh, definitely completed. So we'll move along next to, um, any old business report. None being said, new business. There will be an executive session today, um, but prior to going into executive session, I know you're all thinking this, that I was going to do the Michigan, the mission statement, but, uh, you also, you caught me early on in the game, so that's a little bit of my reading, the mission statement of our organization, please.
Absolutely. SUNY Erie Community College meets the needs of a diverse student body and contributes to regional economic vitality by providing high-quality, flexible, affordable, and accessible educational programs committed to student success.
Bravo. Thank you. There will be no action in the executive session today, um, but there will be discussions specific to a student in discipline, um, so therefore, uh, it's merit to executive session. Do we have a motion to go in? And by the way, as we come out of executive sessions in Thursday, uh, I'd like to mention that there will be, our next meeting will be the 22nd, um, and after a determined form executive session, we'll, this motion to, uh, close out the business of the day. There'll be no other business unless anyone has something now. Okay, then do we have a motion to go into executive session? Trustee Paul Wilson. Trustee Lannigan, thank you. Um, on that particular motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None being said? All pass. Thank you. Thank you, everybody in the room for your time today. Thank you.
We're ready to end this vote to exit executive session, so we're back to business of the board. End secretary for the record.
During executive session, the board of trustees discussed a specific individual as it relates to specific discipline and no action was taken.
No move. Any other business of the board for today? That being said, let's entertain a motion to adjourn. First, second, we have first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh. Thank you, Ed. We adjourn.